Good evening. I call the meeting of the Falmouth Public Schools to order for January 25, 2022. Per Governor Baker's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, the public will not be allowed to physically access this full committee meeting, but it can be viewed live on Channel 14 and a recording of this meeting can be viewed on YouTube. First, let's stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded. If any member of the public would like to make an audio or video recording of this meeting, please notify me by raising the hand icon on your screen, and I will notify the public for the Massachusetts Public Meeting Laws. Hi, Mackenzie Ryan, I see you. Thank you for letting us know, Mackenzie from the Enterprise. Anyone else who will be making an audio or visual recording this evening? Okay, seeing none. First, mission and vision. Bill Dorf, please.
The Falmouth Public Schools creates world-class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue their goals with curiosity, integrity, and resiliency. Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them.
Great, thank you, Bill. Terry, for student comments.
Oh, I love the fishbowl.
I know you do.
Okay. Okay, so this is from a Tyson, who is a fourth grade student at the T-Ticket School. And he answered the question, what would make your school life better? What would make my school life better is more gym.
Thank you, Tyson.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Okay. I was looking for one that has what is...
It should be the opposite. Yeah, it should be green, yeah.
Okay, that one isn't. It says the same thing. Well, this says the same thing, too. Okay, but they're from little kids, so let's do this one, too. This is from Katana, Katana, who's in Grade 1 at the Eastbound Elementary School. And what would make her life more better at school is more dessert at lunch.
Gym and dessert.
So thank you to all the students who made comments.
Absolutely, we love hearing from you. And so now time for public comment. Members of the public are welcome to speak about items that are not on the agenda. Comments should be limited to two minutes in length. Due to the open meeting law, there will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. For items on the agenda, the chair may accept comments from the public following the committee's discussion of an item. Additional comments and feedback can also be submitted by email to schoolcommittee@falmouth.k12.ma.us. Do we have any public comments this evening? Okay, seeing none, excuse me, we will move to the first item on our agenda, which is the public hearing on school choice for fiscal year 23. Dr. Duer.
Dr. Woodburn.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Thank you for allowing me to share this information tonight. So as always, each year, what we do is we look at the district enrollment. So after reviewing the district enrollment, I am proposing up to eight seats in Grade 1 through 11, so first through 11th grade, and then, as always, kindergarten to be determined based off of our district enrollment, which we do not have today for the school choice program for the 2022 to 2023 school year. I do want to make it clear that in our school choice numbers, those eight seats in Grades 1, 2, 3, and 4, those locations would be determined as we move forward. They're not school-specific at this time. And then, if there is, you know, upon approval, what we would do is we would be looking for a date of May 6 to advertise and accept applications. May 13, we would do a lottery if needed. And May 22, that would be when we would send out parent and guardian notification. So if anyone has any questions about those proposed seats and availability, please let me know.
Great, thank you for that summary. And there are questions. I'll start with Melissa.
Hi there.
Hello, Melissa.
I just, thank you. I just have a quick question. I know that you said that the seats that would be available at the elementary level will be to be determined. If there was a parent that, say, had a child that would be appropriate for a program at North Falmouth, would that take a priority?
Would it be? Are you talking about more of a specialized program based off?
Yes, yes.
Oh, absolutely. We would look at those numbers, yes. We would take that into consideration. We also take siblings into consideration, but...
Thank you. That was my next question. Okay.
We do, on applications, parents may request at the elementary level, an elementary school, and we always try and do our best to accommodate those requests. However, as you know, we have to do it based off of the spots that we have available per class.
Very good. Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Very well. Leah. So I was just kind of trying to figure out my math world here around. I'm trying to wrap my head around how many school choice students we usually enroll each year. Oh, okay. And I just wasn't sure if it was, you know, that we would just... I don't know that answer based on this, or maybe somebody can help me figure that out.
Isn't that what this is? Isn't it listed in the corner here?
Well, right now, we have that we would be opening 88 seats, right? For, so I'm just wondering how many we usually enroll.
Isn't it on there next to the blue line?
It says how many we have, school choice students we have. So I just was, I guess I'm wondering a little bit about retention. Like, do students stay? And if we're opening 88 seats, how many seats do we usually fill?
Right. So great question. Great question. Once, when students are school choice, then they are counted into our enrollment numbers. So these would be proposed for new school choice seats.
Did that answer your question, Ma?
Joan, about how many students do we take in each year? And it's been different during the last two years with COVID. But so prior to that, because the year that we were actually, that the school year, the previous school year, we actually did not take school choice students just because of the hybrid situation and trying the distancing. So we did take school choice this year. I don't have those numbers in front of me, but it would really be back at the 1920 school year that would be probably the most accurate. So we can get those numbers to you. I don't know if Joan's able to quickly put her hands on that, but...
Yeah, that's okay. I just was trying to figure out, like, if it's looking at the 151 to the 166, like, is it around 15 students?
Yeah, I can, I can tell. Never, we never meet the quota. We never have done a lottery since I've been here.
Okay, so 88 seats are a lot of seats.
Yes, it is. It's a lot of seats. Yeah.
Okay.
And Leah, I don't have a perfect number for you right now. I apologize. But it would be roughly more as, like with what Lori just said, you know, those contributing factors. You know, roughly around 20 to 30 students that would be coming in. But I can get you that exact number for the last few years, certainly.
Do you know, like, retention-wise, are these students who typically stay with us? Or just knowing that, you know, they have to provide transportation? There's, there's different things that come up for school choice. So it's just when we have a sense around retention for our school choice.
We do have some of our school choices, maybe approximately about 10 potentially in a year could go back to their home school. But the majority of the, the majority of our, our school choice students remain in Falmouth.
Andrea, I see your hand is up.
Thank you. Yeah, and so I think maybe what Lori just said at the end of the last piece about that we, we haven't done a lottery. So I was looking, because I think that the proposed number of seats is an increase from last year. Is that correct?
At the, at the elementary, we had, we had six proposed seats. Yeah, and so we just increased it by two across the board.
Okay, but, but that, it was probably not super meaningful if you said we're not even filling all of them anyway. Because the other piece to that that I was wondering about, I know that you've mentioned the, the bump that we've had in our, this current kindergarten. And so I was just wondering if that number of seats following along with that grade year would be any different? But it seems like we have plenty of room.
We, we do, and, and, you know, we've never actually reached eight in any grade. But this, you know, so you, we may have no applications for a third grade, but we could have six applications in fourth grade. This just gives us a little bit more flexibility.
Thank you.
Bill Dorf, ma.
Question and then a follow-up. Do we know how many school choice students are graduating this year?
If not, then we can certainly get that information for you.
Just be however many 11th graders.
Yes, exactly.
Right, so for the 21-22 school year, we have nine students in 12th grade, nine school choice students.
So that would, then to be, would be, that would bring us down to 159 without any additional seats. And I know this is probably never going to happen, and traditionally, it's a lot lower. But in theory, if we get 88 applications evenly dispersed across the grades, we could, we could handle a total of 267 school choice students.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we always, so if we see that that we couldn't in a certain grade or trying to balance, we wouldn't have to take eight, you know, we could stop at two, that's, because again, flexibility.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Great, Kelly. Yeah, I was just gonna basically say what Lori said, is that just because we have the opportunity to take eight, if adding seven means we're gonna have to add a class, right, we would never do that.
We would not. Yes.
That's why we're proving up to.
Yes, we start adding class because of school choice students. But if there are seats within a class, we would not add a teacher because of...
I just think that's a really important distinction, because I think people think, oh, well, you know, we're gonna add staff, which is a cost to the town, but that's not what we do.
And we also factor in with the up to, because if we were to have other families moving into Falmouth between now and next year, and that changes the student enrollment number per grade. You know, again, as, as Lori said, Dr. Duer said, you know, there's flexibility in the up to numbers.
Yeah, hey, but just a vegetarian question around, and I don't know, Joan, if you know the answer to this, but around how much money we bring in for school choice versus a per pupil, I know it's a little, but we, it's a different amount, I know.
Isn't it $5,000 per school choice student?
Patrick, would you like to address that?
Sure, so, so there is a, a little bit extra money that's attached if, if a child is also, has an IEP and enters into the Falmouth School System. And this is all a calculation handled by Desi, but so it tends to average about $6,000 per student across our 168 students. So do the math, it's a million dollars. This is real money, and without this, these funds, the work that Dr. Talia's done in terms of refreshing our curriculum, the work that Mike Falcone has done in terms of getting our technology up to speed and up to date, it wouldn't have been done. This has been hugely, hugely helpful to the school district.
Any other questions from committee members? I just have a follow-up. Yes, so this went with kind of the retention, or, you know, do we, do we retain students, do they, or do they leave? And then what is our recruitment plan?
Patrick can speak to that. We do have one.
Yep, so we've been, so this Falmouth School Choice Program, you know, the, the positive versus the, the net is more successful than any other school district across the region, bar Nauset, who actually sends out a bus, and we don't want to do that to other school districts. And so the recruitment plan is Ryan Weber and his talented work creating our commercials. And we place those, we, we were the first district to, to good aggressive in placing them across a variety of Comcast channels that are focused on the viewers we want to target, and that's been hugely successful. And it's also goes on, on, on the web placement, too. So it's worked. It's worked really well.
This year, we're actually gonna increase the social media.
Yeah, as we were saying, the commercials are incredible. So thank you, Ryan, for all your hard work on that. Any other questions from the committee? And since this is a public hearing, are there any questions or comments from our attendees here? If you have any questions related to school choice for fiscal year 2023, you can just raise your hand icon, and I will call on you. Okay. Seeing none, thank you. We will revisit the school choice discussion next month. Okay. Thank you very much.
Wow, Joan.
Yes, well, okay. Okay, next item on our agenda is a student advisory report.
And unfortunately, tonight, we do not have a report. Anna was unable to join us, but we're hoping to see her all in February.
Okay. Next, presentation on Falmouth Educators Foundation. Hi, Ellen.
You.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight. Before I get started, I wanted, as I did quite frankly last year, begin on behalf of the Falmouth Education Foundation with our sincere and profound gratitude and appreciation for the extraordinary work that everybody in the Falmouth Public Schools, the administration, the custodial, the cathedrals, the maintenance staff, the bus drivers, and especially the nurses and the teachers, the incredible job that you are all doing to keep our children safe while continuing, continuing to provide them a high-quality education. It's well beyond expectations, and words can't express how grateful we really are to, to everyone for your work in terms of joining us. We place a really close relationship on what we built with the Falmouth Public Schools over the years and how these relationships have enabled FEF in the last two extraordinary years to pivot really sharply to help meet the district's new unanticipated needs. So thank you all. Tonight, what I'm gonna do is give you this, that kind of annual FEF update, the numbers and such. But what I wanted to do, you know, the best thing about being part of FEF is that we get to go into the classrooms and we see this incredibly inspired and creative work that the students and the teachers are doing. So what I'm gonna do tonight as part of the presentation is to also show you some photos of some of that work. So let me get going here. Do share screen, see if I can do this. Is that all working for everybody?
I can see it's a little small, but we can see it. Let me zoom in, Ellen.
So this first slide, the background of this first slide comes from an access grant that was given to Catherine Soldatus. And I'm gonna apologize in advance for all the names I'm gonna push her as I do this, who is an art teacher at North Falmouth Elementary School. And so what this grant covered was individual art supplies to enable the students to abide by the COVID protocols. So each student now has their own supply of art materials without having to share it with classmates. So art is on a cart, which means the supplies need to be transferable and allowed for quick cleanup. So supplies such as paint sticks, squeeze bottles, oil crayons, model magic, and collage paper works well in the classroom and allows students to explore the texture, the pattern, and the color elements of art supplies. They can easily be transported, transported across the school. So this is a compilation of what the students have created this year, and it is hanging in the school card.
Ellen, I hate to interrupt you. The slide is a little small, so Ryan can actually put us into presentation mode so that we can see the slide a little bigger, if you don't mind.
No, that's fine.
Thank you.
All I can, all I can see is the slide, so I can't see anybody. So if you're, you know, making faces at me, just go right ahead.
Okay, that sounds good.
Alan, can you stop presenting, please?
Stop? Okay, so how do I do that?
Up at the top, and so hit escape and then stop for zoom.
Okay. So, two, two, two. All right, so what do you want me to do here?
Let me just turn this off. I'm gonna take control.
All right, so you're gonna run the slides?
Yes.
All right. So I'll just let you know when to advance. So if you can go to the third slide, Ryan, that would be great.
Ooh, that's nice of you.
All right, so, you know, you all heard our mission. Our mission is to enhance the educational excellence in the Falmouth Public Schools by developing charitable support to, to supplement the publicly funded budget. So this picture is a picture of some students in Mrs. Noonan's East Falmouth First Grade Students working in Tara Draper's library marketplace, Makerspace. So that what they get to do is they get to build, engineer, and create while working collaboratively with each other. Ryan, if you could advance the slide. So over the years, we've supported innovation and excellence. Since 2006, we funded over 800 teacher-created projects through five different grant pathways, which I'll talk about. But what this slide is, is this is a slide from a project grant that was put together by Jane Baker at the high school and a number of Lawrence and Morse Pond's teachers called Atmospheric Perspective: Naturalist Studies of Climate Change Impact on Kid Crime. So students in literature and art classes at Falmouth High School and art students at Lawrence and Morse Pond Schools are learning about climate change from expert presentations, site visits, and field studies. And I'm gonna come back to this grant later on, because I've got some great stuff to show with, about this. Ryan? So there are five different kinds of grants that FEF offers. We have project grants, and those are the big grants. There's a deadline of April 1st that we accept those and meet on those and award those grants. Those are what you hear about very often. We also have continuing project grants, so it's, it's not necessarily a one-year grant. Teachers oftentimes come back and ask for a second or even a third year sometimes. We have what we call Teacher Opportunity Mini Grants. These go up to $350. It's a very, very quick application and turnaround, and the kinds of things that teachers come up with is, is really extraordinary. Last year, we introduced Student Impact Grants, and we actually gave out our first Student Impact Grant. Again, those go up to $350, and students can actually apply for grants for various things that they want to do. And the last kind of grant that we have are what we call partnership grants. And partnership grants are where we work in conjunction with school department and perhaps, excuse me, an outside agency to create some projects. So we've had single-classroom grants, district-wide grants, community partners. We've gone through all the schools, all the grades, and all the disciplines. Give me one second here. So this photo is a photo of the garden club at the Lawrence School. This is actually as a result of a Teacher Opportunity Mini Grant awarded to Caitlin Church and Heather Colva. Next slide, please. So let me just revisit last year, the 2020 to 2021 school year. Nine Project Grant went forward. Thirty-eight Teacher Opportunity Grants were awarded. And we also, last year, because of the extraordinary nature of the year, we also introduced last year's, something we call it access grants. So these actually went up to $2,500, and we awarded 25 of those in the year. These were things that, that, you know, they were just unique needs that the teachers had for more money than the Teacher Opportunity Mini Grants. So we just responded quickly and awarded 25 of those, and we awarded our first student grant. So over on the left-hand side, you see these two photos. The first one answers the question, so how do you hang the senior art show when half the class is remote? So what we did was, with FEF funding, the high school was able to purchase a large format printer and supplies to reproduce all the student work and continue the tradition of the AP Senior Art Shows in the student gallery. The bottom photo is the student grant that we awarded. So two fourth-grade students, kids from different schools working together, purchased Rocky the Rhino t-shirts and basically gave them, they were given to all of the fourth-grade students across the elementary schools as a way to create a community and a way to remember what was a very unusual school year. Next slide, please, Ryan. So what's going on this year? So in this year, 25 Project Grants, which were postponed from 1920 and 2021, are moving forward. And we also have 15 new, new, six new and nine continuing. So a total of 15 new project grants were approved. So you have 40 Project Grants actually happening this year, or at least we're hoping that they will. There may be a few that, that need to be postponed because of COVID things. This slide is already outdated. Since I sent this to Ryan this morning, we've actually awarded five more Teacher Opportunity Grants. So 33 have already been awarded this year. So the slides on the left, at the top, this is Corinne Adams's project grant. She brought ceramic artist Maureen Mills to FHS to demonstrate surface design techniques that she uses in pottery. And the students practice several decorating techniques and use these techniques in assignments. The bottom photos are photos from the X, X-Brassus, and that, I know I butchered that. To the Isabella Stewart Gardner Museum, which actually took place this fall. In this project, which has been active fairly long-running, students in advanced placement literature classes synthesized literature and visual art, ultimately creating and presenting a poem reflecting what they experienced and observing a work of art at the Isabella Stewart Gardner Museum. Really just like, you know, if you've been there, you know what a wonderful place that is to just get lost in your thoughts. Next slide, please, Ryan. Continuing what we've been doing this school year. Through the efforts of our state representative Dylan Fernandez, F E F was awarded a $100,000 legislative earmark. And the way that we are choosing to spend that money is working closely with Dr. Dora and Dr. Tellier to identify three project grants that have been funded so far. Actually, these, that, those three project grants will take up about half of the monies. We're continuing to work with them. So what we've already done so far with this, this legislative earmark is funded the materials and the supplies for the Food Justice Program. We've sponsored a responsive classroom professional development seminar for the elementary principals. And we funded the Racial and Social Justice mural project that is taking place at the high school. What we also did, we've also taken over ordering of all supplies for all grants. Given everything that was going on in the school system, I know Patrick's staff was pretty overwhelmed. So we're taking care of ordering supplies for all the grants. And we held the teacher workshop that helped prepare teachers to write their project grants. We did that last Thursday. Photos on the left, another, that's another one from Miss Noonan's first grade class during their technology class at Miss Draper's Library Makerspace. And the one on the bottom is, i- it is just such a special project. Mullen Hall teacher Wendy Risco brings students together who have lost a parent to create a keepsake ornament in their memory. And this year, through a Teacher Opportunity Grant, she was able to give them all a special teddy bear that had been specifically made for grieving students, the pouch in the bear's back from the Metcalfs and photos. So you know, that's, that's just, there's nothing more to say about that one. Next slide, please. So this one is, I just thought I'd tell you about some of the grants, some of the other grants we've done. This one is called BlueBots, Kathy Rodriguez at the T Kids, T Ticket School. So basically, the photo at the bottom is a BlueBot and students are able to program them to go forward, backward, turn left, turn right. And so they're working on robotics, math and problem solving. And it allows the teachers a direct assessment of what they're doing by asking the students to simply code something, a particular task can have the bot responding accordingly. Next slide, please, Ryan. Tara Draper has been a longtime F E F grant, grantee. And what she has done, she created what she called a book tasting in her library at East Falmouth. And so she took a lot of the books that had been purchased through F E F grants supporting the district's diversity, equity and in- inclusion initiative and organized them by genres, which helps students discover new titles that they hadn't read before and had a whole book tasting event in East Falmouth. Next slide, please. So this one is at the high school, Corinne Adams and Jane Baker, working together with the National Art Honor Society. What they're doing is they're actually putting together an 80-foot mural that is being created to stretch down the main corridor of Falmouth High School to create a visually uplifting mural for everyone to enjoy. The inspiration came from artist activist Arthur Halverson, who painted bright flowers and bold designs and boarded outdoors and windows during the Black Lives Protest in Boston. So this should be just a spectacular mural to be at Falmouth High School moving forward. Next slide, please. I had mentioned this project before, Atmospheric Perspectives by Jane Baker and the teachers at Lawrence and Morse Pond Schools. So basically, students are creating collaborative and individual artwork to illustrate information and communicate about climate change. The artwork is going to be displayed and student-produced books and videos are going to be put together and made available to the community. Teachers are getting professional development on data visualization. And so the students have had a number of field trips. They've been to Pennikes, they've been to Cuddy Hump, they've been to the Barrier Beaches on the national seashore. And so they've been gathering material. Next slide, Ryan. And so out of these field trips, they're coming up with some just absolutely gorgeous artwork. I could show you five or six more slides of this, but if you could go to the next one, here's another set of artwork that the students are creating. So just absolutely beautiful, beautiful things. Next slide, please. And so I want to remind you that we have our 14th Annual Winter Gala coming up. If the honorees are going to be Lynn and Michael McNaught, I hope you were able to see the wonderful article that was on the front page of the Falmouth Enterprise on Friday, telling you all about Lynn and Michael. They are just absolute treasures for this community. The gala is going to be a cocktail event with past orders. There's going to be both in-person and virtual ticket options. There'll be a silent auction, a wine raffle, and we're going to have hopefully entertainment provided by the Falmouth Place School Jazz Bar. In-person tickets are going to be limited to 225. So if you want to register and get those, I would encourage you to do so as soon as possible at FalmouthEducationFund.org. It's March 19th at the Kuna Mesa. Next slide. So this is my last slide. So the Morse Pond students participated in the Global Traveling Mural Project, which is a project connecting with other school communities around the world to create murals of peace, friendship, diversity and love. The fifth grade students made a mural of a beach scene with a lighthouse using the zones of regulation colors represent ways to handle emotion. And this is the sixth grade mural that the students made after participating in an identity, identity mapping lesson. And but before the mural is cut up and sent to different areas, the F E F grant is provided funds to make copies of the murals so that they can have them at Morse Pond. And if you could just go to the last slide. Basically saying thank you and asking if you have any questions.
Alan, it's so amazing to see the presentation and all the ways that F E F is supporting our students. So thank you. I think we were both, we, we are all oohing and aahing at all the pictures and the artwork. It's absolutely amazing. So thank you for that.
You're welcome. It's, it's, it's the best thing about being part of F E F is that, that, you know, if you're a project liaison, you actually get to go in and, and, and see these things happening. And just as other board members, you know, we get these reports and we get these photos. It's, it's just extraordinary.
It is amazing. Any questions or comments for Alan? Sorry, Melissa, I see you.
Um, not really a question, but a few comments. Thank you, Alan. That was an amazing presentation. I really want to thank the teachers and staff that reached out to F E F for the grants, like the amazing, one-of-a-kind Jane Baker, Tara Draper, Tara Noonan. There are, I know that's just naming a few Corinne Adams, but I really, you know, I love to see Mrs. Baker's students evolve through the years. And I love to see Ms. Draper's students and her Makerspace also evolve through the years. It's really exciting and I don't want to leave out Mrs. Adams. You know, her, her clay and all of, you know, when, all of it, it just, it's so, we're so lucky to have F E F here. I, um, we, I, we have family and friends that live outside of Massachusetts and are educators in other areas of our country. And when I tell them about F E F and I tell them how amazing it is and the volunteers that put in their time and, you know, it's a year-round effort and it's not, it's, it's just, they're baffled. So I just really want to thank F E F again. And I, I know that I can speak for myself, we love to support F E F and we really are blessed to have you here in our community. So thank you again to F E F.
You're welcome. Thank you, Melissa. And you know, a part of what you're saying is just a reflection of the extraordinary educators that we have in this district, you know?
Absolutely. Um, thank you so much for the presentation. We loved it. So thank you and have a great night, Alan.
Well, I know I'm going to sign off by saying I hope that I get to see you all in person on March 19th at the Kuna Mesa. Thank you all. Be well, be safe.
Thank you. Bye. That was great.
Could you promote?
Sorry, Mike Silverberg. Okay, so next on our agenda is the Presentation on Wellness Committee. Okay, and I believe our speaker is being promoted. Yep, there he is. Hello, hi.
Thank you very much for having me on.
Thank you for being here.
I'm going to share my screen. Of course.
Well, he's doing that. Would you like to introduce our speaker?
Yeah, so just, we introduced Mike early on when we did the introductions with the, the beginning of the school year. So Mike is the Director of P E Health and Wellness. And he's here to talk to us tonight about our Wellness Committee and the work that, that he's led since school started.
Everybody can see the slide?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Alright, so just, uh, here to just give you a quick update for the Wellness Committee. We met for the first time in November and due to COVID, obviously has caused many things to slow down and have some delays. So we really wanted to re-energize the committee and I'm very excited to report that we've had over 30 members of the staff and parents join us. And our focus is really to accomplish the goals that were previously set. We do have three subcommittees that we're divided up in. The first one is physical activity. And we plan in, on the physical activity subcommittee, we are planning in 2022 and 2023 to have an event on a Saturday to bring in eight to 10 different activities to try to expose our elementary students to different activities that they might not be exposed to. Before we do that, we are working right now on a survey to be approved to send out to parents to get us an idea of what students are participating in, what their interest is in, is if there's any gaps. If there's a, a large interest in an activity, but we're not offering that, whether it's through the school or through the community. And we're going to take a look at that data and hopefully that data will kind of guide us to seeing what activities we can bring in for that Community Service Day. So that's what we're working on for physical activity. Our nutrition, our goal to create a positive proactive supportive nutritional environment that enables sound choices. We're trying to make every school healthier. So right now, we are working on some language that was, that has been developed, but we're trying to finalize a policy. We're trying to finalize some language around food celebrations and creating a list of options. So we have our next wellness meeting on Monday, this Monday. And we're looking to, to take a look at it and hopefully make some final decisions. And then we have a nutrition meeting that following Monday. So hopefully we can tighten everything up and move that forward for approval. And finally, our social emotional learning. So obviously it's got to be aligned, you know, our, our subcommittee is aligned to work and support the district schools' social emotional learning goals and we are utilizing D E S A. I think some of you may be familiar with it, but the, for those that are not, it's assessments empowers educators to build a measurable and actual social emotional learning program with reliable assessment. So for K to six, we have three benchmarks. It's a mini screener with eight questions and last June, K to six had filled it out. We're going to fill it out again this fall and winter. Lawrence and F H S students has started the assessment this year. And what that does is that there's three categories. Kids are in, students will be in strength, typical or needs instruction. If students are in the needs instruction area, there's another full assessment with more questions that will give us more information. And this really provides us information from the district view and it can be really narrowed down and very specific to a classroom. So we're looking really to what the impact of COVID on students mentally and physically is really the focus. And we need to find, you know, further find interventions. So our next meeting for S E L is Wednesday, February 2nd, and we're going to review some preliminary results. And that's our update.
Well, thank you so much. Any questions for Michael? Can you just make a quick comment? It's just really nice to see, to hear an update from the Wellness Committee. And we often hear the committee report from attending the Wellness Meetings, but it's just really nice to have you here and, and provide us with ongoing updates about, you know, what everybody's about to. So I really appreciate it. Thank you for taking the time.
No problem.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Wonderful. Well, thank you again for being here and we look forward to hearing more updates from Wellness Committee. So have a great night.
Thanks for you too. Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is the first read of Gearing Up for Kindergarten Handbook. Doctor Dora, I'm going to turn over to Doctor Tellier. Doctor Tellier.
Hello, thank you very much. I wanted an opportunity to share with you on behalf of the Policy Subcommittee as well as our Early Learning Coach, the Gearing Up for Kindergarten Supplement to the Student and Parent or Student and Family Handbook. And about half of the handbook is a scaled-down version of some of the information that the parents will receive when they receive the K to four handbook on which you annually vote each spring when we go through that process with the Policy Subcommittee. What's unique to this particular supplement is that the, the first part of it is sort of a welcome letter welcoming families to thinking about kindergarten and going through the registration process and pulling up information, helping them understand what's the difference between the orientation meeting, the kindergarten screening, the family welcome meeting, how each one is different and what to expect of each. And then it also walks through a little bit around the admissions and health requirements, just as reminders of the documentation. And then there's a couple pieces in there more specifically about how families can begin to acclimate and understand what the outcomes are for kindergarten and understand the roles of members of the school leadership team, the people with whom they're going to first meet. And then the other piece that's particular to this, that's not in the Student and Family Handbook that currently exists, is a curated list of readings all focused on reading within families to help children get excited about coming to kindergarten, so all children's literature available both in our libraries or in other bookstores or online outlets. So it's just a high-level summary of what this document is and why we use it and the pieces that do duplicate from our Student and Family Handbook is really just to put a spotlight on the things that are specific to kindergarten while they're going through the transition process and queuing them into the forms packet as well, because there's a number of pieces that'll show up and they'll get permissions and they get the forms packet. But they, these families will, once their child begins kindergarten in the fall as a fully enrolled student, they will get the full handbook and they'll get the complete forms packet that we issue each fall. This is just part of the acclimation process and a quick reference.
Great. Thank you for the summary. Um, question, Leah.
Um, so I just, I have, I have a lot of feedback on it and I'm not sure if this is the right time to do that, but can I go through some feedback?
Sure.
Okay. So the, the first, the first section here around translations, it would be great to have those sentences translated. So people know that they're do you want this level of, I mean, if you don't want this level of?
No, they're translated on the copy I have, so I don't, I don't know what happened.
So what's translated here for me is when it says, for more information on translating this document into your preferred language. That's what's translated, but there are sentences above that that are not translated. So it says, the web accessible version of this document, it will be available on the elementary school website. You can use a built-in translation tool that is translated.
So I have a question about if people call the 130, the extension 130, is there someone who's available who speaks Portuguese, who speaks Spanish or who speaks French?
This was actually in a recent conversation we were having about translations. We were going to change this to email a designated email line and instead so that we can translate it and they can send it to us in their language. So that's something that we're in the- So that's something that we're internally, since we shared this supplement with you, is something that we're looking at, because we were going back and forth about the same issue.
Okay, great. Yeah, because just making sure that you're not getting calls and not able to give the information to families in a language that they understand. Then with the kindergarten admission and health requirements on Section Five, there's no mention of McKenney Vento, and I'm just thinking that it would be really great to have information around McKenney Vento in this document, because this is the first document families are getting from our school district, and just to ensure that they're aware that if they are homeless, they do not have to provide these documents. Then, and let's see, oh, in the who's who in our schools. Sorry, Leah, what page? Sorry, it's page seven, who's who in our schools. I thought it would be great to include teaching assistants, because teaching assistants are very critical in our early childhood programs, so I thought maybe including what that is, just for parents to know. And then in the transition to kindergarten on page eight, I thought including a D here around if your child has another language in, based on the home language survey, that your child's English language proficiency will be assessed, and that this helps us support the English language proficiency, or the English language development of your child, something like that, just so families are aware of that. And then I was wondering about the Safe Arrival phone numbers. If, if someone, if English, if they're not fluent in English, is there a way for them to hear a message or to report a message in a language other than English?
That one I cannot readily answer. That information is copied straight from the handbook, so I would have to go back and take a look at how that's structured, and when you first dial in, if there's directions for language.
Okay, because I think that would be a really, really important addition for our school system. And then on page fifteen, it says, "What if my child's first language is other than English?" And it talks about that the home language survey is given annually in the forms packet, and I have not received that annually. I, I don't, that's not necessary to receive it annually, but it's just, might be just misinformation here. It's initially when you fill out information.
Because we have a number of families who may not have updated their preferences for interpretation or translation, one of the steps that we were looking at taking was doing a more frequent, not for the sake of enrollment, but just for making sure that our records don't get outdated with what family needs are around language.
And then I thought with, so then with the getting involved and connecting with our school community, are quarries required for parents who come into schools to visit? So I thought including information around the quarry there would be important for our new families to make. And then I had a, I'm sorry, I obviously went through this with a lot of details here, but I had a comment on community connections, just understanding a little bit more about how our district handles flyers for translation to ensure that all families have access to it, and that's a big question, and I know you don't, you don't have to answer me right now about that. And then I made some comments just on the Getting Ready for School books to read with your child. I think that this would be a really great place for our DEI officer to look and to maybe add some suggestions here. I added a couple that I know that are aligned to kind of immigrant families and immigrant experiences, but that I think that we could have a much richer list that really is a diverse and inclusive list here for our families. And you had mentioned something great, Sonia, about just access to libraries. I think that it would be really great to include that here for our families who are looking for books to say, "Where can you find these books?" And having the library's websites here, and also you could put, you know, local bookstores. A cousin's. So overall, my biggest comment with this is that I think this is a really perfect document for us to run through our DEI officer. So just a perfect example of like this resource we have now with Jackie, so that was my overall comment. I went through it so much detail. Sorry. No, it's okay. Thank you for your very thoughtful suggestions. We have a question for someone in the audience. Ryan, can we promote Jen Foley, please? And maybe while we're waiting to promote her, Kelly, did you have a quick question or?
Yeah, I just had a couple of quick things. One, I, I like the idea of the library book, library card suggestion, but I think it would be important to also mention how to get a library card, because a lot of people have never had one, and especially people who, you know, the library is not their comfortable place. It would be nice to just make it more like so easy. So I had a couple of quick things. One is on page five. To just, in the immunization section, say doses for all of them. I think immunizations is, we just need to be consistent. But that also, the reason that that struck me in the first place is that I think the whole document could, you know, not just for this, but for a lot of things, we should really run our documents that go to families through a literacy level assessment. You can do it just in Word, and it'll tell us what the literacy level is for some of the documents that we're sending home, because, you know, we're, people who are putting them together are very well-educated and communicate very well, but not everyone is, especially if English isn't your first language, it can be really hard to understand the content. And simple structures of sentences is just fine. So that's just a general assessment that I think the literacy level on this is really high, could use to be run through an evaluator. And then the only other thing I think I had was on page seventeen, we don't mention that we do use the school Facebook page, and that's something that we know people like that, so. Including that would be really great. That's all I have. Just wanna write that down as well. So Ryan, are we unable to?
I think she may be writing it.
So, so Jen, it sounds like we are unable to promote you to the Zoom because our Zooms aren't compatible.
Hers is not.
Yours is not compatible to the Zoom that we're running. And so if you could email your comment or your question to us, we will definitely see it and we will respond accordingly. Again, our email address is schoolcommittee@thalmith.k12.ma.us. So we apologize for the technical issue, but please email us and we'll get back to you as soon as possible.
Probably should have also mentioned that I think this is a great idea, and I'm glad we do it. Instead of just offering criticism, I do think it's really great, and I thought it was really well done. A lot of great info in there.
There's a lot of stuff in here. There's a lot of getting people acclimated stuff.
And I, I, I think it's really.
Books towards the kids. This was something new this year, Sonia, right?
Yes.
Instead of getting parents acclimated, they changed the focus to getting kids acclimated. That's great. So.
Yeah, so I, I, I think it's really great getting information out to families, but I do kind of echo what Kelly's saying that, you know, it's not, if it's not accessible to families, it's not really getting the information out. So it, maybe it would warrant itself a video also accompanying it that could walk parents through so they wouldn't have to be reading everything. Just support.
We, thank you. That's actually a great reminder. We have a Welcome to Kindergarten video that's in production right now, touches on some of these. Some of these points, we'll have to go back and look at the length and content of it.
All right. How long, you know, when parents come in, I know they have certain times set at the admin building for parents to come in. Do they, people sit down with them and tell them stuff to them, or who does that? I'm not sure. I mean, I know we do it. I don't know who does it or how much we do that, but I'm sure that's a warm welcoming for parents, too.
I saw Dr. Woodward. You want, you want to answer that?
Oh, I was just gonna say that actually the kindergarten registrations are now happening at the individual elementary school. So there's opportunity to speak with the staff right there in the buildings.
Yeah, that's great. Any other comments or questions? Melissa?
Two parts. One, Leah, because maybe you have so many interesting comments and edits, perhaps maybe you could email the policy directly, just so that we don't get your specific comments. There's no, nothing will be lost in translation. I think that we would all appreciate that. And then.
Thumbs up in case you couldn't see. Definitely.
Oh, perfect. Thanks. That would be super helpful, just so that we are all in alignment and that we, we, we're getting it straight. Two, Lori, and maybe this is a, this is sort of a, I don't really know how to ask it. At the hospital, we have translator phone, and I know that it's a little bit different, because, you know, we're at the bedside and we have the patient in front of us. Is there a translator, like if a family who is maybe Spanish-speaking were to call, is there like a direct translator app? Or maybe not like an app on our phone that I'm thinking, but like a program that we could have in our district phone system so that we have an in-real-time kind of translation, considering we're not going to, presumably, I'm guessing here, we wouldn't necessarily have all of the the languages needed by a staff member on hand, either in the district or in the ad building. Does that make sense? Am I being clear? Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. Oh, I was gonna answer, but I think Joan wants to.
Go right ahead, Lori. I'm sorry, Dr. Duer, or would you like me to?
I just get very excited about it, so go ahead.
Melissa, thank you so much for mentioning that. Actually, a new resource was just shared with us, and we're actually currently exploring that, the opportunity of that, and when that can be used, and how can we continue to increase our level of resources for the type of translation that we need, and in, like, kind of on the spot in the moment. So thank you, but we're actually, we're, we're just digging into that right now.
That's great. I know that, you know, like I said, in the hospital, we have, we have, we've had a translator phone for forever, as long as I've been doing this. And we recently, in the last five-ish years, have an iPad, which is super helpful, because sometimes you, it's easier to see, you know, inflection when you have somebody next to you and you're trying to explain something, and, you know, it's, it's easier to kind of have, you know, that sort of three-way conversation. So I don't know if that's even an option. I don't know if that's something, I'm sure that that's something that somewhere in education, there must be an option for this somewhere. So I'd love if maybe we could also look into that, because I know sometimes the littles, or even the not littles, but the new folks, you know, to our students, maybe their, you know, English, I know, isn't necessarily the first language, but maybe it's like really new to them, and that might be something, I don't know, maybe I'm reaching. I have no idea how expensive it is. I'm just, it's a practical tool that I use every day.
Melissa, and absolutely Joan, what she said, but I also want to talk about a, a new app opportunity that the principals are actually using with our parents this year. It's called Talking Points, and it's, it's very exciting, because you, you enter the phone numbers of however many families. So you can do a number of people in different languages, and then you can type a message to one person or to a group of people. You're texting, and when it shows up on the phone of the person you text, it shows up in their language, because they set it up. So you're, you're typing one message. It could go out to multiple languages to people. You can put in a link, and if they open up the link, then the entire document translates to their language. And what we found that that is the more immediate way the principals have been able to communicate with our families. So it goes beyond the principals, our ELD teachers, you know, so we're, we're expanding that, but we just started this year, and it's, everyone's really excited how well it's working.
Any other questions or comments? As always, Dr. Tellier, Policy Committee, everyone who wrote this, thank you so much for all of your hard work. We appreciate it. Thank you. Next on the agenda is to act on the KIPod Collaborative Capital Reserve Account. And as you recall, we discussed this at our last meeting. In summary, the collaborative is seeking our approval to establish a capital reserve fund to support their capital projects. And it is important to remember, our approval does not commit the district to any funds. I think that's a big one. With that, is there a motion to act on the KIPod Collaborative Capital Reserve Account? Terry?
I'll make the motion to act on the KIPod Collaborative Capital Reserve.
Yes, I know there was a budget subcommittee meeting today. Was there any discussion around this?
Again, we're not committing any funds to it. We're just giving them permission to open a bank.
Okay. I missed who seconded the motion. Thank you. Welcome.
Kelly, I was just wondering if there was any new information from, you know, is there anything from the collaborative end additional to share beyond what we learned last week or last meeting?
There really wasn't any additional discussion at our last meeting. They were just basically waiting to hear back from the districts to, to find out what the results were, because obviously they had to wait for all districts to meet and to, to discuss it. Yeah. And I mean, I, I do believe they listed a cap at ten million dollars for their capital funds. But again, we're not being asked to commit any funds to it, just again, asking him to open a bank account, or getting him permission to open a bank account.
Exactly, and it's so important. I mean, right now, they, they fund their projects sort of as they are able to, right? And they don't have a reserve up in any way, except to, I mean, that's.
Right, and if, and if there are ever any, you know, funds left over, they're, they're nonprofit, so it has to go somewhere. To be able to put it into a capital fund would be extremely helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. It's so huge. Terry, did they see your handout?
Yeah, because historically, in the last five years or so, collaborations in the state are being extremely looked over in financial means, because some collaborative in some part of the state misused funds or something. So I think it's a way just to involve more people, being us in their dealings, and I see it as a good transparency-building kind of procedure.
Absolutely. So, oh, Andrea.
Thanks. And maybe, Bill, you might be able to answer this, just a process question, because I haven't been around when we've had to vote on something for the collaborative before. Does this need to be unanimous with every school district part of the collaborative?
It, it does not need to be unanimous. And in fact, there is discussion about if, if school boards or school committees don't even bring it up or act on it, then basically a absent vote is allowing it to, to them to go ahead and go forward. So I don't believe it needs to be unanimous.
Great. Thanks.
And Andrea, before you mute yourself again, it's a roll call though, so Andrea.
Andrea Thurl, yes.
Melissa Keith.
Melissa Keith, yeah.
Bill Ryder.
Bill Ryder, yes.
Terry.
Terry Meders, yes.
Well, Jess.
Dorf, yes.
Former guest.
And Natalie Calhoun was also, yeah, so it is unanimous. I would wish the collaborative. And Natalie Kalam was also a yes. So it is unanimous. I would wish the collaborative well on establishing the capital reserve and I will reach out to them to let them know that we said yes to this. Okay. Next on the agenda is an update by Superintendent Dr. Doer.
Thank you. Just wanted to mention that the Martin Luther King Jr. Breakfast that took place on Monday, the seventeenth was fabulous. Every year, their, their presentations are wonderful. And this year, there was a beautiful music tribute by Naomi Westwater. She's a Cape Cod native. And I think that you can still actually see it if you go to the website, the No Place for Hate website, that you can still see it. I encourage it. It was really beautiful. Um, just an update on the COVID testing program. I know that you've received communications, but just briefly to let you know that Fountain Public Schools is moving toward that option. So test and stay will end next Monday and the contact tracing that, that kind of goes with the whole test and stay program. So now we have the in-home test. We had, first we put out the link for the staff and their test goes out to them. Went out to them today. We have picked Wednesday to be our testing day. So so staff would test any, anytime before they come to work tomorrow. And then they would report any positives to the, the principal, the COVID team. Uh, we are preparing for the home test to go out next week for our families. So they should go out on Tuesday. They will go home with students. And again, we hope that the students take the, the test anytime, you know, after school on Tuesday to before Wednesday. And again, families would report that to the COVID team. Uh, and, uh, and to the school if there are any positives, otherwise they would come in. So it's a, we just set up the link on Friday. At this point, we have 650 families that have opted in and it is an ongoing. So they can opt in at any time. They, you know, there's a, would be a cutoff for like next, you know, next week when we start. So we're, you know, because we have to order the test. So we have to have enough time. But if then if they want to opt in later, they would get into the next round. So we're just leaving the, the process open for that. So just a little bit about that. Excited about something that's coming back to Falmouth High School, Clipper Calm. We had mindfulness exercises for staff and students at the high school and Heather Nivellus, a school adjustment counselor, is bringing that back. Uh, and that exercises like ranging from learning to focus purposely on something, your, you know, breath, your sound, sensation, movement, and some fun activities that will be done during Clipper time on Fridays. So Clipper Calm. We are continuing to have some vaccination clinics. If you've noticed the link on our Falmouth website, we give out the vaccination. It is kind of stalling at the high school around 75%. Lawrence at 65% and I know we just started with the five-year-old and up. So we're trying to, you know, just target some, some additional clinics in the schools during the school day as a, as an option for parents to help them out. So unfortunately, we were started with East and T-Ticket today. But we did have a low turnout at the schools, but we'll continue to keep them open and let's see how that goes. So included in your packet is a kindergarten flyer. And it's been distributed to local daycares, pediatrician offices, public libraries, and has been posted on our website and Facebook page. We have for No Guff, which starts next week, we've left you the No Guff t-shirt beside. I don't know if you took a look at it, but this was a student design. And the theme was respect others. Thank you, Leah. So you got, it was very cool design. That was very exciting. And so Carl Cabosa from Cabosa Disposal and Laura Peterson from Cape Cod Aggregates have been supporting the purchase of the t-shirts and they, they continue to do so. Uh, so, and then each school will start their activities uh, next week. And just to mention a few, few things that will be going on at North Falmouth, we have lunchtime guest readers promoting respect others. At Marlin Hall, they'll be wearing clothes that will light up the school with kindness, the brighter the better. At East Falmouth, praise notes given out to students from staff. Uh, T-Ticket, they're going to be doing an outdoor community meeting to kick off the No Guff. And at all, four elementary schools at the morning announcements, they'll be playing inspirational songs of peace and friendship. They're doing many other activities. So that was just a, um, just a random selection of things that will be going on each day. There's something at each of the schools. At Morris Pond, there'll be several things going on, like Support a Team Day, Hat Day, Throwback Thursday. At Lawrence, they'll be doing student nominations for teachers to get the No Guff award. Yeah. And then, and then also you've been caught No Guffing for the, the students. And at Falmouth High School, Greg Gilbert will be doing a briefing of No Guff at the, on the Falmouth High School Morning News. And at the sports, all home games will have two sentences read before the national anthem about No Guff. So just, just some things, activities that will be happening next week. Unfortunately, we've had to cancel the New York City trip with our music department. Um, there's just still a concern with the impact of COVID in New York City. A lot of shows have been canceled. The travel agencies are even trying, hard to even find, find something and get a, in order to get a total cost of what the, the trip would be. And so at this time, they have made the decision that they're, they're going to cancel the trip and, and they had to do that early on because of, you know, travel insurance and such. Um, the NEASK report, Mary Gans and Tom McManaman will be here next meeting on February 8th to present the final report. We just received the draft report on January 14th and they just had their final review meeting with the NEASK visiting team today. So they'll be here next week to talk about that.
Oh, thank you. Yeah. Thank you very much because there's so much information in there. Thanks.
Absolutely. The, I, I don't know if you remember, but back in March of 2020, Mary Gans came to the school committee to give a presentation on class rank and presented just the limitations of the current practice research and practice from other Cape high schools. And then Sonya Tellier, there were a few questions. Sonya Tellier followed up with a memo answering the school committee's questions at that time. Instead of moving forward, we had just days after that school committee presentation, we went in lockdown and because of COVID, we put everything on hold. And that was actually supposed to start with the then freshman, which we would be the FI 23 graduating class. And so we are now revisiting it and looking at that. So we're going to have a presentation on February 8th again. Just to remind everyone, but I'm going to send a memo to you just to kind of catch up on everything that was shared. Uh, so that'll go, I'll send that out to you and then next, and then on the eighth of the next meeting, we'll just give an update on all that. So everyone understands it again. And then we would be starting with the current eighth grade students. So this would not actually go into effect until they're seniors. So it's the, would be our next year incoming freshman.
What would be going into effect?
Eliminating classroom.
Eliminating.
Eliminating our, our current practice. Yes. So I'm sorry. Thank you for clarifying this. I did think I said it, but now I know I didn't. Okay. So anyway, so look forward to that, to the, the next meeting. Um, the annual legislative breakfast is scheduled for February 4th, nine to 10:30. There was an invitation sent today. You can, it's a virtual session that you can register. Uh, and that's always I find very interesting that all of our legislators are cross-keep, get to, to speak, we get to ask questions. So it's, that's great. And then finally, I would like to encourage you to stop by, even this evening, you could, at the Falmouth High School Gallery. We have student artwork displayed, their interpretations of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. It's fascinating. And something special, this exhibit was actually a tribute to Bill Mock, our former advisor to the Model UN. It's a great presentation.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Leah, I have a question. So this was kind of way back. There was a lot of information. Thank you. But I was wondering about, shifting to the home tests, is there a video that will go out to families around how to do the home test? Okay.
It's included in the letter.
Okay.
That they receive.
And the, the video, will it, will it also explain what to do when if you're positive?
So there's instructions that tells them. Uh, the video is from the state. So
Okay.
I don't think the video actually tells them to call the COVID team, but we have that listed in the, the letter like we normally do with their, the email antenna.
Video available in other languages. The state made it. I would hope they had the.
So the entire letter and communication is in different languages. I didn't go to a different language and click onto the video. I can check that, but I would hope to your point, if you did the entire letter and they can select whatever language, that the video would be made that way too. But I will check that. Thank you. I, I made an assumption.
I haven't received one yet, so I don't know.
Okay. Thank you, Ryan. Perfect. So it is.
I have a question. Um, so the home testers are, are going out to the staff, in fact, now, and then they're going to be going out to the students. If, uh, let's say a staff member does test positive, what is the procedure after that?
So then they follow the, the new quarantine guidelines. If they are asymptomatic, uh, they would be home for five days, can return on day six. If they are symptomatic, then it's, they follow the, the 10-day, the more traditional route or when symptoms improve, right? Which is.
Okay. So there's, there's no follow-up requirement for a PCR after that?
No, 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 no longer. Good question.
Any other questions or comments? Just want to check our friends out on Zoom. I don't see any. Oh, Andrea.
Um, yeah, I, I forgot which report we were on. I just wanted to follow on to Lori's mention of the legislative breakfast. That 10:30 time slot, hopefully you've seen on the flyer, the Division VII team is putting together a panel discussion talking about student mental health. And I think it'll be very interesting. So hopefully you can stay and join that too. And don't forget there's, it's very subtle on there. You do need to register. So just keep an eye out for that.
Great. Thank you very much, Andrea. Okay. Thank you again for the report. We appreciate that. We appreciate that. Uh, next up is to approve, routine business approved minutes of January 11th, 2022. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, but with one tiny edit. I have one as well. Okay. Um, on the second page halfway down, heard Kelly Welch's request. Can we just add the word adding? Look into adding the phrase. Um, just because I want to make sure it's clear when we go back, what in the world I was talking about. Or, I'm sorry, page four, yeah. Look into adding. Thank you. Yep. And my minor, minor edit as well was on the first page. The woman from the Enterprise, her first name is Calli, C-A-L-L-I. I don't know if that matters, but C, C-A-L-L-I. So Kelly made the motion with those two edits. Is there a second?
Second.
Julia, Julia, second, second. And it's a roll call vote. Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
Bill Ryder?
Ryder, yes.
Terry Meders, yes.
Welch, yes.
Dorfner, yes.
Mia Pomm, yes.
And Natalie Kalam was also a yes. Uh, committee member reports.
I'll just report that negotiations is still ongoing. We have another meeting scheduled and I have nothing else to add, but that's it.
That's right. Yeah. Um, any other committee member reports? Um, nope, seeing none. Our request for information. Leah?
So I actually obviously have taken lots of notes here, but I, my, my request was just to get just an overview of how we do do language access in the schools. Um, so understanding how we're providing interpretation and how we're providing translations and what the process is.
That would take us a lot of time. Cause I feel like we go through that a lot.
Yeah.
Every conversation.
We just need to know what the, yeah, and it would, yeah.
Yeah. Um, any other requests for information? There. Okay. Seeing none. Um, I make a motion to move into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the S A B C and D. Having these discussions in open session may be detrimental to the school committee's bargaining position. Is anticipated that the school committee will not return to open session. Is there a second? Bill Dorfner, second. It's a roll call vote. Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
Bill Ryder? Ryder, yes.
Terry Meders, yes.
Welch, yes.
Dorfner, yes.
Mia Pomm, yes.
And Natalie Kalam was also a yes. So to our attendees, thank you so much for joining us this evening and school committee members who are Zooming, you should have the Zoom link as well. So have a great night, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.